Could be a long meeting.
Dinner at eleven.
I haven't had dinner yet, not gonna lie.
I don't either.
I always refer to it later to my followers.
I'm usually able to talk myself out of it.
Right.
Jesus crackers.
You know.
I love that it's now fashionable, right? You throw it on a thing and it's called a French name and.
Shakurri board.
I just learned how to say it in English. It took some coaching.
Wow.
It is six o'clock. I call this meeting infield. Blackboard to order. Start the introductions.
Hi, I'm Kate Plumlee Stewart.
Grace Young.
John Kluw.
Eric Russell.
Alex Kennedy.
Alyssa Bonnet.
That flower just happened.
First order of business this evening is a public hearing for discussing action taken and take action on the use of American Rescue Plan ARPA funds. With entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moves.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, public hearing is open. Just a quick reminder to everyone as we go through this, when you speak, please state your name for our minute taker. That's very helpful for the record. Ed, do you want to go ahead and just provide a summary of where we are?
Yeah, so we had obligated all of our ARPA money, little excess of four hundred and seventy-two thousand for the purchase of a police cruiser, the ambulance, and the DPW truck. As I mentioned to you guys, DPW did a wonderful job putting in for the VW grant and we ended up getting a grant for that truck. That covered the majority of it. So at this time, it appears we have one hundred nine thousand eight hundred and forty-three dollars and sixty cents left according to the US Treasury to obligate. It does need to be obligated by the end of December or it gets sent back. So with that, we've had some discussions over this year about fair to obligated. We've talked about putting it in the general fund budget to give us some flexibility. We talked about using it for the elevator project that we knew we pulled outside of the Whitney Hall contract. And then we've also talked about just obligating it for CIP expenditures such as the fire truck, which is to. I think what we had planned to do earlier this summer has worked. We've given it some more time coming into the end of the year. I'm fairly confident right now that we're going to be able to manage that hundred and seventy thousand dollar payment out of the budget. Right now, it appears after taking salary payroll, health benefits, those things out that we know will be large payments, that we're coming into the end of the year with about three hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. We'll have our basic expenses from every department, but we're confident at this point stating that we we're pretty sure we'll come in within that three hundred and seventy-one and we'll have maybe a little bit to roll over. So I don't know that we need to move any ARPA money into the budgets. It also appears that we're going to be able to manage the Whitney Hall project down enough to fit the elevator in there. That's a little bit harder one because we have, you know, there's allowances and different things and we all know the project's going a little bit longer than normal. So where it actually ends up, I'm not as confident, but I do think we, I think we're going to be able to manage it out. And if not, in my mind at least, it's a select board decision, but to fall back to get money for that if needed to the CIP. So if we went ahead and obligated money from our ARPA to the fire truck in CIP, it kind of works the same way. We pay it out of there. And if we need to take a little bit more from CIP, it's money we would have spent on that fire truck anyway. So with that, open it for discussion with the select board and then.
Initial comments from the select board? Any public comment? On this recommendation for the use of ARPA funds for the fire truck? No, I see no. Go ahead.
Martha Sharoni, if you could kindly provide a little bit more details about the fire truck, that would be helpful. I also did a little research to see how other towns and municipalities have used this type of funding. So I printed it all out. I didn't know whether there were any some ideas and needs. So I'd be happy to speak about some examples, but it seems that the fire truck is something that is top priority already.
The fire truck's already approved. So this is already approved spending. And so what this would do is it would use some ARPA money to offset that cost, which would leave our CIP fund with additional funds for the future. Is that a fair summary, Dan?
Yeah, it also reimburses CIP because CIP paid five hundred thousand dollars for the land. And so we actually paid more on CIP and we got back in the original ARPA.
Yeah.
So yeah, that's a great idea. That's a really good point. Not on one-year expenditure.
Yep. Any additional comments?
In fact, I think this is a much better idea of spending money through CIP for something as a real project value as a show game like last year. Thank you.
Other, a wood comment? Saying no further comment to entertain a motion to exit the public hearing.
So move.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Just before you do it, I did write the motion up to one hundred and ten thousand dollars. Just for that little bit of wiggle room, making sure we work with the treasury to make sure that we account for every penny of the.
Discussion among the board?
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Make a motion authorize the spending of up to one hundred and ten thousand dollars of town ARPA funds to offset the cost of the fire truck that was paid for with CIP funds and to further authorize the town manager or the designee to take all actions and execute all documents as necessary.
Just the second, Dan?
I want to make one amendment.
It wasn't paid for with CIP.
Wait, I missed read. That was to be paid for with CIP funds. Thank you.
Your second stands, Mr.? Yes. Okay. Discussion of the motion on the table.
Makes perfect sense to me.
Yeah.
I think it works.
And I appreciate Dan bringing this up. Thank you, Dan.
Alright, all in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes? Moving on, approval of minutes. We have three sets of minutes. Regular non-public November fourth, emergency non-public November seventh, and non-public from November twelfth.
I thought as usual, they were very well done, comprehensive and to the point. And I would move that we accept them as presented.
Great, second.
All three of them.
On the November seventh and twelfth, I'd like to have my name spelled correctly.
Oh, since on November fourth, I found that your name is not.
Oh, I missed it on the fourth, then.
That was the only one. I love the non-public ones.
So the two of the non-publics, the seventh and the twelfth, and then Alyssa.
So. The fourth is the motion to adjourn.
Okay, yeah, it's, word processors like to change my name to say Stewart. And it's a pretty common, so thank you.
I was so excited that I found.
I missed that one, though.
But like substantively, they're.
That was the most non-public of them?
Yes. Well, three.
Okay, there's three non-publics and one regular. And there's four sets of minutes.
So my motion is for all four sets of minutes.
Why do we have?
Second for all four sets of minutes with amendments as noted.
Oh, I ended with two. Guys, the November twelfth, we have two copies. One has the correct location, one doesn't.
So it's only three.
You want the one with the correct location?
No, there's from November fourth, there's two. There's regular and non-public. And there are non-public from November seventh and non-public from.
So I'm holding two copies.
There should be four sets.
Ignore the shorter version. The longer version with the correct.
Thanks.
I don't know where those others came from. No, that's fine.
Templates, that's the right name.
Yes.
Thank you.
Would those typo corrections, is there any substantive? All in favor of approving the minutes? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved. Is there?
I would make a motion to unseal the non-public minutes of November fourth and November seventh. Both that were sealed for one year. And I think at this time, it'd be appropriate to unseal them.
And how about November twelfth?
Oh, sorry.
We have three sets.
Yep, and twelfth. There we go. Yes. Fourth, seventh, and twelfth.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, the minutes are approved and the non-public minutes are unsealed.
I have a suggestion that we rearrange the order of the agenda as I noticed that Sylvia Dow was here for the discussion of the pilot program.
Norm's gonna log on.
Oh, he's gonna log on at six thirty?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, so with Norm calling in for that, why don't we just run through the agenda until six thirty and then we'll switch to business wherever you're at. Alright, so board reports.
Not this time. Eva is meeting this tomorrow.
The budget committee met last Thursday and we talked about the budget review for the recreation and the library departments went very smoothly. Most of there was some discussion about the fact that our recreation director will be leaving and we'll be searching for new director and they will overlap for one month. So that budget item is a little higher for that. Other than that, I think it went very, very well. Then there was some discussion over the health insurance program and the finance software. The health insurance is a big deal and we are making some changes, which of course makes employees very nervous. But the town manager is working on that and it will decrease town costs, I think by one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, which is a big deal.
Yeah, so pretty detailed update in my manager.
Excellent. That's it for me.
I have nothing.
Conservation Commission met on November seventh. I will tell you that I missed the beginning of the meeting, so Shirley might have to answer any questions if you have any. I did get there. They were still talking with the developer from Laramie Farms and answering questions. So Conservation Commission was asked as part of ZBA's process to weigh in. There's, they're not quasi judiciary like other boards. So it was just simply asked to weigh in on the ten impacts. There are ten wetland crossings. And so this was the second in a series of meetings. The number of members of ZBA, sorry. Conservation did go out on site and they viewed three different locations that had some of similar features to what are being proposed. So they looked at a six-month-old project, a ten-year-old project, and a twenty-year-old, I think, right Shirley? And so they brought back photos to share with everyone, which was really helpful and really neat to see how things grew in and did these water features, retention ponds, the different forms of drainage. Did they work properly and how are they looking in terms of being re-vegetated? So that was a, I'd say that was a very helpful piece. I'm super thankful the developers were willing to do that and also the folks on conservation who went out and did that visit. Out of the discussion on these ten impacts, ZBA had asked for information just on this. So it wasn't a discussion on the project itself. And so we came up with kind of a list of things that we liked and that the developers had actually, in some cases, themselves put forward, just to make sure it was memorialized. And then Shirley wrote, the commission approved Shirley to write a letter with those items. And so that is a public record if you want to see it. That went forth to ZBA and my dean did read that into the record the other day. The other substantial piece of business that did happen during that meeting is that Kurt Gotthard came and asked Conservation if we might like to reclassify some classic roads to be class A and B trails. That was a pretty lively discussion. I think there'll be more discussions as nothing decided on whether anyone's going to pursue it this time, but I think it is of note and something to pay attention to because reclassifying trails can mean closing access to certain wheeled vehicles. And it does change, right now, Class Six Road, the town cannot spend money on, right? A trail you can, so there's upsides and downsides. So I think whether the Conservation Commission takes that up remains to be seen, but I would definitely pay attention to that one.
Would that then go to town meeting?
It would have to go to town meeting and that, yeah. So it's not anything the conservation can make a change on. It's something if they wanted to explore it, they could. And the next meeting is the first Thursday in December, which is the fifth, here at seven PM.
And I was not able to make the last planning board meeting because I was at the Lebanon City Council meeting supporting the good work of Jim and Ed on the sewer rates. As everyone knows, we send our sewers to Lebanon Treatment Plant and they're resetting their rates. And they still have a public hearing Wednesday before they officially do that. But Jim and Ed have been doing really good work, working with their public works. And it looks like this year Enfield will have a level rate as far as Lebanon goes, which is good news. And then they'll be working to review the formula that's used to calculate the Lebanon rate hopefully over the next year. So it's really good work that Jim and Ed are doing for the town.
Good news.
So that's good.
And was it the planning board who put on the Main Street charrette session?
That was the Upper Valley Lake Sunapee Regional Planning Commission that did that. The planning board promoted it some, but it was the regional planning commission that put that on. Alright, any questions for the board reports? Alright, town managers with the reports. Ed?
Alright, staff report. We have had one DPW employee give resignation, one of our light equipment operators. So you should be seeing soon, hopefully tomorrow, but sometime this week, job description will be going out. We'll be taking application for a light equipment operator. I have heard a little bit that there may be some talk out there and we may have some people that are already interested. So hopefully we'll be able to fill that soon with winter coming upon us to get someone in here.
Do you know why the person resigned?
Money. Most always money.
Always.
Yeah, they got a pretty good offer for quite a bit more money somewhere else, not with the municipality. And we're still looking for a groundskeeper. Jim and Jeremy have been doing interviews this week and I think they have a couple more to do, but they're they're hoping to find somebody. I don't know if I'd say hopeful, but they're really looking. So if anybody's interested, we're still accepting applications until that position's filled. With the light equipment operator, we'll be doing that as well. They'll be reviewing applications as soon as they come through the door and doing interviews and that position will remain open until filled. We are also taking applications right now for an AP payroll clerk. Same thing, we've been looking through applications. We have twenty-six applicants, I think, as I looked today. And we'll be doing interviews this week with a few of them, so.
Twenty-six?
We've had twenty-six applications. That doesn't mean they're all qualified. We have twenty-six applications.
It's better than like three?
Yeah. So we did find a couple that were that were qualified and we reached out to them and we're doing interviews this week. So we'll continue looking at that. If you know anybody that's accountant-type AP bookkeeper, they might be interested, please send them our way. We'd love to talk with them.
So light equipment operator, is that a CBL?
That is.
These easier to find.
Yeah. And then some good news will be coming before you with him soon, but Frederico Moreno, our police officer graduated this last week from the police academy. He does have a few weeks of FTO to go before being released on his own as a certified police officer for the town of Enfield. So I'd just like to congratulate Officer Moreno for making it successfully through the academy. And I've heard he's been doing well in his field training as well. So I have no reason to believe he won't pass as field training officer and be a good officer for the town of Enfield. Just thank him for his time and effort. The two projects that we're working on, the Whitney Hall project. I told you at the last meeting that three-phase power was to the building. I can now tell you that it's turned on and the the power is in the building and it's running equipment at this time. We're working, I believe, this week to program the HVAC equipment, get that up and running. And we have scheduled the elevator work for the second week in December. They're coming, I believe, December ninth is when they are coming. But I did tell them that if there's any openings before then, please feel free to send people down, even if they don't get it all completed. So we'll be looking at that. Brett Lep's working on all the finishing details throughout the building. They've been putting carpet in and, you know, all the finished stuff. So we're excited as this project comes to fruition. Last week, we did some base coast paving outside that was completed. We will not be doing the finished paving until spring, but it's again, nice to get some asphalt down before winter, so we don't have a mud hole out there. And right now, it looks like the way the project's going, that we'll be looking to move into the building in mid-January sometime. That's still a moving target, but that's kind of what we're thinking right now. At the public safety building, kind of the same thing. Parking lot base was done last week, so we have a parking lot and that won't be a mud hole over the winter either. They're getting ready to do forms and pour some concrete for the sidewalks around the building prior to winter. Ruffin Electric and Plumbing has begun inside and windows should be delivered on site soon to complete the ceiling of the building in preparation for temporary heat for the winter, so they can keep work. That project's moving along well and we're hopeful that they'll be done by May. That's their completion date. I don't know if I have anything else on that. Healthcare benefits, as John had talked about, we concluded our research. We ended up looking into three different companies that work here in New Hampshire. We have decided to move our health benefits away from Health Trust. We'll be working with a company called Rogers and Gray. They're a broker that Brad Rich actually turned us on to and they have a really good program. I'll explain it a little bit here in a minute, but we're working through them. We're going to be still having an Anthem product. That's what we had through Health Trust. This will just be a direct purchase of Anthem Insurance through Anthem, through the broker. We're moving from a no deductible plan that had some copays to a high deductible plan. It's a five thousand dollar deductible, ten thousand dollar family maximum deductible. There is an eight thousand dollar per person out-of-pocket expense with a cap at, or maximum expense with a cap at sixteen thousand dollars. So there's a little gap between the deductible and the max out-of-pocket. They do have a product. It's very similar to an HRA, if you guys know how those work. The difference is on theirs, it's called a PFA program that the employee and the employer pays in, or an HRA, just the employer pays in, both pay into this. So we did set this up where the first year, as John said, a lot of the employees are extremely nervous. They're moving to a high deductible plan for the first time. They don't really know what that means. So we're going to be doing education, but we decided to move to together funding this PFA plan. It'll a hundred percent cover the five thousand dollar deductible per person. There is that three thousand dollar gap. If someone uses a lot of insurance, that will still have to be paid by the employee outside of that. We will be watching over the next year or two, the usage of that to find what I'm calling the sweet spot in where do we want to fund that deductible? Where a large majority of our employees will not have an out-of-pocket expense, but the heavier rate users will have a little bit to do. So we're kind of moving towards that consumer-driven healthcare where people are really watching how much money's going out the door in each of their their medical procedures. With that, I guess the really good news, as John said, is the town's going to be saving based on the 2024 budget, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. I want to just add to that, if we wouldn't have made the move, we would have had a nine percent increase to our rates. So overall, it's over a two hundred thousand dollar savings for the 2025 budget year. And we think it's going to be a, you know, a good first move on insurance to move to a high deductible plan and keep the employees fairly confident that they're going to have a good healthcare plan moving over and take a little bit of the risk and figure out of it. And then we can look at moving that deductible target over the next couple of years. And then we're maintaining and we're going to be moving a few of the grandfathered employees towards the eighty-twenty cost share, not only on the premium side of things, but on the PFA funding side of the deductible as well.
How many grandfathered employees do we have?
It's like five or six, somewhere in there. And they kind of range from when they were here, a little bit below the eighty-twenty. What I have told our employees is we're going to move them as close to that eighty-twenty as possible without increasing their healthcare rates from what they did last year. So most employees will see a good deduction in their healthcare rate, which is, it's another win. It means they get to take home a little bit more money in their paycheck, which is good, but some of the grandfathered employees may not see that reduction as much. And continue on from the planning department. As Kate had mentioned, the ten wetland crossings went to ZBA last week and the ZBA did award them their special exception for the ten wetland crossings on that project. Also last week, the Laramie Farms appeal hearing happened last Wednesday. The main arguments why the plaintiffs were that they felt that the development would lower their property values. Our attorneys stood on the fact that there was an assessor, not an assessor, but an appraiser that submitted a letter that stated they would not. So we don't really know how the ZBA hearing will go, but the judge does have sixty days in which to render his opinion. So we'll be watching that. We'll keep you up to date on what happens. As Alan, Alice talked about, we had a successful planning event from the Upper Valley Lake Sunapee Regional Planning Commission for Main Street Visiting Charette last Thursday. There were about thirty-five residents, but we would describe as a great cross-section of the Enfield residents that thrived and they came together to talk about Main Street issues. The conversation was productive and the people at the Regional Planning Commission were excited for the information that they got. They'll be distilling that down and giving some community input soon as they continue to work through this great project we're working on. So happy to, excited to see what comes out of this Main Street Visioning project. And then DPW, as Eric pointed out, that the three of us, me, Eric Russell and Jim Taylor, attended the Lebanon City Council meeting discussing sewer rates. The presentation was on the recalculation of how we're being charged. Ultimately, what we're looking at is we have one main pipe that goes between Enfield to the sewer treatment plant and basing all sewer rates on just that length of pipe and the sewer treatment plant itself and nothing else. So we're going to be looking at that. Lebanon's working on how to recalculate the way things have been charged. I will, I mean, we've been working hard on this, but I do want to give a little kudos to Sean Mahal and the city manager, who's kind of the one that said, hey, we should really look at how this has been done in the past and look to the future. So we presented to the city council. Sean and his staff presented freezing the account, as Eric had said, while we're doing this calculation, because we believe their calculation's going to actually decrease the cost of what we have been paying. The rest of the city of Lebanon will be getting a sewer, water sewer increase this year and they're proposing that Enfield stay frozen. The city council seemed to understand the request and understand why it was being done. And they did approve to send this proposal on to the public hearing this Wednesday for final rate setting. Stay tuned and see what happens through that process. Well, stay tuned and see what happens through that process. Um, just updating, well pumping testing is underway for the marsh number two and three wells, the two new wells we put out there, so they'll be testing going on for quite some time to make sure that. Pulling water out of those two wells does not affect our other well or surrounding wells in the area.
Why does Jerry Tice keep telling meetings that it's not gonna be online till twenty twenty six and like he was told by D P W? When we, when we ask, we're not, we don't have a date.
I don't know that we have an exact date. I don't know that it would be online anytime sooner than that, but we don't have a date for.
But he seems to think he had a date when he said it, when. And I've watched him say it multiple times and I thought that was rather odd since we didn't have one.
Yeah, we don't even have a full final cost, I don't believe, of what it. What actually costs to hook it on. I know we've got talk of putting a building in, so we have a possible. Treatment area if we need to treat our water in the future. But we'll be looking at all those costs and the ways, what it'll take to put it online. D P W, at the last meeting, I told you that they were sending out the um lead service inventory mailings. Um, Jim Taylor's been feeling a lot of. Questions about that actual mailing. I don't know if you guys have heard anything about it, but the the notice really states that we cannot confirm that there's lead in their line. We can't confirm they're not. In a few of those lines, um, but at this time, there's not really much they can do. When water's flowing through the line normally, it makes a little coating over whatever leads in the in the line. Minimizing any hazard to that. If the line's disturbed, you could have a problem. But um we'll continue looking and until the. Until there is any lead confirmed, there's no need to replace the line or do anything like that. So um he'll continue looking at that. This will be an annual letter sent out if we can't fully confirm. I mean, that's really what it is. If we can confirm there's no lead, then we don't have to send anything. If not, we need to send a letter letting people know. So um with that, if you have concerns, feel free to to call Jim at the D P W and he can explain it a little bit better than we can. Um. The surplus tractor approved at the last meeting for auction is on auction and it's live right now if anybody's interested. Again, if you need the link, it'll hold a Jim Taylor to D P W and he can help direct you to where that's at. And then um D P W has been blowing leaves from the roadside ditches and cemeteries in preparation for winter. And then the last thing that I almost forgot is tomorrow afternoon, we have a broadband kickoff event. Um, as you guys know. Even coming into this meeting, I was asked to join the Grafton County Broadband Committee. Been working pretty hard on that project as well. We were approved an eighteen million dollar grant. Eleven, well, it was right around eleven, eleven something, almost twelve was um. Approved by the federal government and the match comes from the county and or our partners. And we are excited to have an event tomorrow to actually kick off construction of that project, so. We'll be working on getting broadband middle mile distributed through the entire Grafton County. And that is my town manager.
Any questions? Go ahead.
I think this is the first meeting since the election and I just wanted to make sure that we thanked everyone who donated. The night. I think it was Guzana. Thank you so much.
Alright, uh, is. Norma's on, okay, so we will move on to the business of the evening, starting with the exemptions for organizations for the pilot. This is something that came up last Friday. Ed, you wanna start us off?
Yeah, so if you guys remember, I didn't write the date down, but earlier in the spring, April, May timeframe, um. We had talked about the state cracking down on some of the exemptions, some of the, some of the land for nonprofits that might. Technically be taxable under state law. Um, we had moved forward, so some. Possible pilot agreements and during that meeting, the select board decided to write the four pilots for Chosen Vale Visions and. Bill Village Association and the Up Upper Valley Snow Sports Foundation for one dollar. To do a five year pilot for a dollar a year. In, in reality, exempting them from the next five years. Well, the D R A called the other day and they were not going to approve our M S one valuation form because of the. Four pilots, they didn't like them and thought it was a way to circumvent the law. To allow these exemptions. I talked to the guy for a little while there and um. Finally got to the point where he said he would, he would approve the M S ones and move forward, but he would. Turn us into the B T L A, which is. The tax court, if you will, to. The rule and to look into this and and make a final determination on what happens. Um, I talked with Eric a few times that day, just trying to maneuver through what we were gonna do. Um, we decided pretty quickly that this needed to be discussed at this select board meeting. Um, when I first called him on Friday, it looked like our tax rate was gonna be held until we made a final decision. After talking with Norm and I'll let him explain this a little bit better. We actually decided to go ahead and push through. I told the guy Friday to go ahead and approve the M S one and if he needed to turn us in, he could turn us in. Talked with Norm and what we can do is have the discussion here. Decide what the select board wants to do. If we decide to move forward with the recommendation from the D R A to. To implement these taxes, then we can issue a supplemental bill. If we want to move forward with the decision to let them turn us into the B T L A, we can do that. So um just hearing all the possibilities and knowing where. We can maneuver. I didn't see a downfall with having them go ahead and approve the M S one and get working on getting us a factory. And we could have this discussion and work through, so I'd like to. Turn this over to Norm a little bit to kind of explain the process a little bit, explain. What happens if they do turn us in and we and we move towards the B T L A and. Yes, and we can talk about it a little bit more after that. Norm?
Thanks, Ed. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Good evening, folks. Uh, Norm Bernace, the contract assessor for uh Enfield. Um. Yeah, the, this is something that's been going on with the Department of Revenue and the Board of Tax Land Appeals for. Uh, last few years started in Ospey. And they've been kind of clamping down on exempt requests. Exemption property requests and um. What, what happens is, is, is the select boards from town to town, it's their normally their, their decision. But um sometimes they've uh. You know, sort of overlooked the statutes and the board of tax land appeals has come down on some of these communities and. And uh, the Department of Revenue in some cases has reported the towns. To the Board of Tax Land Appeals and then they bring you before them for a hearing. Um, they'll file a petition. Um, so what that means is. Uh, if the Department of Revenue turns, whi- which they stated they would do, they would. They would uh uh file a complaint with the Board of Tax Land Appeals and we would have to go before the Board of Tax Land Appeals. And explain our position. Um, I've submitted recommendations in the past which um dealt with partial exemptions on some of the properties. And you know, some, some of it taxable, some of it not taxable, the board has decided. Which is their purview to um exempt them and develop a pilot program. Some of that is allowed, um, but um. Ultimately, if if the Department of Revenue um files a complaint against us and we go before the. For the tax land appeals, we're gonna have to explain our position, why we exempted them. Um, as in this case charitable and then gave them a a pilot for a five year agreement. Uh, basically, um, you're supposed to um exempt. Properties on a yearly basis because the use has changed from year to year. So I'm not so sure a five year agreement is is the way to go. Um, but um you have to um. Agree that it, the property is exempt to begin with. Um, and I think that was one of the questions from the Department of Revenue was. Did the board actually um exempt them? I think the agreements um state that. Um, so moving, moving forward, we can either go forward to the Board of Tax Land Appeals and state our case. And let them decide, or if the board wishes, they can um. Um, revisit this um at future meetings. And if they decide part of the property is taxable, they could um actually. Um, send a supplemental tax bill and sort of uh usurp the process of the of the Board of Tax Land Appeals and the D R A complaint. But that's a discussion I think um you may have tonight or you may have another night. Um, there's no um immediate. Thing to do right at the moment, but so that, that's, tho- those are sort of your options. Um, there will be an expense. For uh if they file with the Board of Tax Land Appeals, we'll have to have some attorney representation. It'll take some of my time. Um, and they will, you know, question the board's, the, the, the select board and myself and um the town. As to the process, so um. Yeah, there will be an expense that way. You can deal with it in future meetings and um decide if you want to. Um, tax part of it um with a supplemental bill. That's always an option. Um, or you could, you know, stick with your guns and we could go to the Board of Tax Land Appeals and let them adjudicate the. The, the issues.
Yes, Norm, I have a question.
Sure.
Uh, you did say just now that we could exempt on a yearly basis. Is that correct?
Yes, you have that, you have that uh ability.
Does that solve the problem?
Um, it may. Um, if I, uh, I've, I've uh. Dealt with exempt, I mean, that's certainly within your authority as, as the assessing officials being, being the, the, the select board. Um, I know that they have taken to task communities. Who have exempted properties where the recommendation was different than. Uh, or, or, or the decision by the board was different. Um, this happened in Ospey recently. They called the. The uh select board before the Board of Tax Land Appeals. Um, and questioned their, you know, authority under the law to. Exempt them for uh an explanation of the reasons why they exempted them, but.
Norm, that just made no sense. Could you repeat that more clearly?
I can, I can do it a little more clearly. There's, there's a really good probability that this is gonna go before the B T L A now.
Even if we go for the one year front.
If you go for the one year exemption, they're gonna still state that a portion of that be, depending on what. Which charity, they're all a little bit different, but a portion of. That needs to be a taxable payment.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Visions is a little bit different because it states right in their RSA that they should pay a. Pilot based on the municipal services used, so that's something that we would need to pull out. The Enfield Village Association, Chosen Vale. Her the RSA has some portion of their property that falls under the taxable rules.
Mm-hmm.
You could exempt them and see what the D R A does.
Okay.
This is kind of on their radar right now, so.
I guess, uh, we visit this every year and I think. We've tried to follow whatever, to me, I feel like we've tried to follow whatever laws and hoops. The state government and D R A make us jump through, but like Chosen Vale, the question has always been about. The, the bike shop, I think specifically, right? That's the, the.
And I think that is now taxed. No?
Did?
No, oh, sorry.
Um, the village association's a tough one because their ta- their nonprofit formation is entirely based on. Refurbishing and. Buildings and so that one's a tough one, but the snow sports one, that was over the parking lot. You can't tell me you can't run. You can run a ski. Hell, without a parking.
Yeah, the big thing with their one is that a portion of their land. Is owned by someone else and leased back to them and the law says you can exempt land that's. Owned and occupied by. Since they're not owned, it's right in that sticky gray area, but.
Right, so just that one piece would be. Different. But they could be exempted for the rest of the property.
Yes. Most all of these can be exempted for a large portion of their property. There's just. The one portion, the Eva portion is the part that's rented out as a resident. Um, Chosen Vale is the bike shop. Upper Valley Snow Sports is the whole piece of land that's owned by someone else.
And, and I guess to me, we're not the ones who decide if they're tax exempt, maybe the land piece, but these are folks who have gone through. Some public scrutiny on a federal level in order to get a nonprofit status. You know, they file with the IRS. Why would, why would we pretend to know more than the IRS? I guess that's a, a real challenge, right?
So, so what I'm sort of seeing it is. The state is changing how they're going to view tax exemptions. They're not really saying how they're going to interpret anything. So we can either sort of try to guess and see what they say and try again. Or we can sort of defend these organizations that have been good to our community, go. To the B T L A and then the state will have to handle this way. The end result is acceptable rather than trying to guess of what it is.
Um. Establishing the pilot programs was a bit of a guess. It was a thought on our part that this was a way to avoid some of the issue.
And it was a, and it was not just a guess. It was a, the law says you should have pilot programs. It does not define what they have to be, so we wrote. Pilots as we thought they were. They said, oh, those are no good. Yes, so to some extent, there's some value just going to the B T L A if we have to, so that they then have to say this is an acceptable result. Uh, because if the state wants to define what it is, then.
And I think there's an issue too with, you know, I'm reading, I read through the email exchange and. One of the points I'm worried about is it was represented that the Board of Selectmen were concerned they might not stand the test of the rules for charitable exemption. So they offered pilot. I don't think that's an accurate representation. I think we knew that it was, the state has some different rules, but we didn't think they weren't gonna stand the test.
No, no.
At any point, so I don't.
They were exempt before and they remained exempt.
No, and, and they also questioned whether or not they were approved for an exemption by the board and we clearly did approve them.
I mean, and we, and we absolutely know they're a charity and I think that, that calls into question, but that is not in the represent, and that's what caused part of the rest of us. To me.
But for tonight, so one, one path forward is, you know, they have not actually reported us yet to the B T L A, presumably. Um, they're moving forward to setting our tax rate with the pilots as currently in place. Um, they can, we can play out the pro, we can either try to make a change now or we can play out the process. And sort of the worst case scenario is they would say, no, you have to tax these four groups in a different way and they would receive. A supplemental tax bill. Or whatever that balance was uh that we did incorrectly. Um. But I, I mean, I, I'm sort of in the like, we should play the process out because I think this is happening throughout the state. Um, nobody knows what the end result should be because it had, you know, you sort of have a moving target.
Norman has a comment.
Oh, go ahead, Norm.
Yeah, well, see, the, the problem historically is that it's always been up to the select board to make these decisions. And at some point, the Department of Revenue and the um. Uh, Board of Tax Land Appeals said, well, you must. You know, look at these things more carefully and then as communities have. Um, taken a stance and said, you're not charitable, um. The problem is, is those charities have taken the cases to court. And, and most cases have, have won a, a lot of those cases, so. So towns and cities are in a dilemma. They're kind of in a state of limbo as to. You know, do they think their local charity um deserves an exemption? And then the, you know, the other side of the coin is, you know, the, the Department of Revenue reports the. Reports these things and the Board of Tax Land Appeals takes them up and says, you know, you cannot exempt the Elks, for example, or you cannot exempt the Moose. Or whatever the organization may be, because, you know, in the, in that case, it's a fraternal organization, so. They're, they're really putting communities in the, you know, sort of in a, a, a place of. What do we do? What don't we do? Kind of thing. So that's sort of my comment there. I mean, I, I deal with it, um, you know, with my exempt properties and handover on a daily basis.
Alice?
So, um, I don't know how.
So, I don't know how interesting it is that we would have to incur legal fees for the process that you're describing. So I was just wondering if there's a way that we could just kind of understand the criteria, which it sounds like we understand the criteria, and at least move forward with looking at what that would look like if we applied that criteria and still went ahead and suggested our own path forward, and maybe we could circumvent the legal part.
Yeah, I can get a little more information on that. As Norm said, this isn't a decision we have to make tonight. We made the decision, or the critical decision Friday, to move forward through the tax rate part. That was the part that I was really concerned that we couldn't hold up the tax rate for weeks or months trying to figure this out. We needed to get that done. So with that, moving forward, we can take a little bit of time, do a little more research, get some figures in here for you, not only, you know, what are we looking at from a tax standpoint, but we can look at, you know, what does the attorney say that he thinks legal fees for something like this would cost, and you guys would have all the information to make a decision moving forward.
I guess the other thing we can think about is every one of these is a true nonprofit that could be applying through the budget process for some kind of funding, right? Nonprofits can apply through the budget process for funding. So, and I'm not saying that's gonna save anything this year, and I'm not saying I wanna, but I think it's, it's kind of a shell game at the end of the day, but we're stuck in the middle of. Every one of these nonprofits provides a very substantial benefit to our community. And it's kind of a game we're being asked to play, but I feel like, to me, they're worthy of being defended if we had to go to court. I, I'm willing, I'm willing to run that risk. Worst case scenario, they have to pay in, but I don't think, you know, we're, Chosen Vale is taking on a huge project, right? That's the museum, for those who don't know. The Village Association has long taken on many projects in town. We don't have a gym you can go to, right? We don't have a YMCA, so that's your snow sports, and they do stuff year round, and Visions. I don't, municipal services use pails in comparison to how much money they save. The amount of money Vision saves us by not having people who are living and trying to care for themselves when it's not appropriate. We can't ever quantify that. That's crazy.
So I feel a little conflicted here, because I have a relationship with millions. So apparently I'm not gonna vote, but I firmly believe that we, we should take a stand in favor of those organizations that do so much for us, all for us.
There's no question about that. They were exempt before, and they'll always be exempt as far as I think the consensus of this board is concerned.
And we aren't exempt.
It's just a question of figuring out the nomenclature that apparently the DRA wants to hear. If we need to establish a flexibility, and as you look at it, per John's suggestion to look at one-year pilots, I think we could look at that.
Yeah, I don't think it's gonna be a pilot thing. I think it's gonna be, are they exempt, are they not exempt, and.
We'll go back and.
They're all very clearly exempt.
Yeah, I think so.
I agree. It's just like, huh, I mean, like we know what we're gonna have to do, like where it's gonna go down a road, for sure.
We're, we're gonna have to work through the process, and, you know, and there'll be twists and turns along the way. I don't think there's a need for action tonight.
I'd like to look at those numbers, and maybe, I think the other thing is, these are organizations that we could be, like if it's a $200 bill versus a $20,000 bill, I'm just throwing out random numbers, not real ones, guys. Have a conversation, like, is this something that would sink your organization, right? And, and knowing that, like, $200, because, you know, a parking lot or something might not be as bad as $20,000.
I think we can, we can get you guys some information. I'll work with the organization that Norm got, trying to figure out where we think those types of numbers would fall. We'll get some more information in here for you on the state laws and what they're saying they should be.
And kind of like, how, how likely, how far down the legal road will this have to go?
It might go, I mean, if it goes to BTLA, that's the Board of Land and Tax Appeals, and that's the end.
It sounded like a lawsuit or anything, you know, it's an appeals process.
For some reason, I thought Norm was describing something different, where the organization.
Towns that went the other way and taxed their organizations, and their organizations fought back. They only recourse, they would sue the board system. But if we go to the Board of Land and Tax Appeals, we go in with our assessor, our attorney, to a little bit of their time to kind of state our case of why we feel they're exempt, and then they make a decision whether they think they are.
I, I do see one, so, so folks, it, folks, it's getting a little hard, especially with that, it's a little hard here. If you have side conversations, please step outside. I do see one hand up online, Sharon Boufe, please unmute yourself and go ahead.
Hi, just a question, is, I was listening to the conversation, is this an easier process if you go, if you do this yearly versus if it sounded like you had a five-year agreement or plan? So that's my question.
Yeah, so I, there, there's a little bit of unknown, but the answer is no, because this, DRA is questioning whether the organizations are tax exempt at all.
Okay, thank you.
That process either way.
Thank you.
All right.
Are they questioning whether they are tax exempt, or do we just haven't defined them properly?
They're questioning the portion.
Yeah, well, and the letter said, says, I'm just looking for some documentation to, to show that these organizations were approved for an exemption. And, go ahead.
I provided them proof that the board was stating that they were exempt, and that's when he called back and said, if we're gonna approve these, we're gonna turn you into the Board of Tax, Land and Tax Appeals, because we don't believe they should.
Yeah, and there's other lines where they're questioning that they.
Little portions, little portions, we talked about, not the, not the organization as a whole. I think everybody knows they're five-on-C, three, they're tax exempt organizations. The law just states if they lease the property to someone else, those types of things, that that portion of the property.
So do we know what that specific thing is for each one of those?
We know, we know what the area is, and we can work with Norm to get a figure.
But it does get somewhat complicated, because like Eva provides a portable housing subsidized rent, which is providing value as well. Clearly, if you tax that portion, that rent goes up, so you lose that value from that organization. Right, so it's, it can be a fairly complicated discussion, which is why we'll have to get some more numbers to talk about it again.
And I think we provided some sort of numbers. We look at the possibility of paying the town's portion only of the tax bill, but after the revaluation, we should probably just go back through that exercise and get you guys the numbers.
Really, just the state makes me crazy with this, like, you have to do this, and we do it, and then they're like, oh, no, not that way. It just, it's, it's.
Okay, anything else on that for this evening? We have a path forward, we'll get some more numbers, and we'll see what DRA does. We'll keep, keep moving forward. Thank you, Norm. Thank you very much, Norm.
Thank you, Norm. Appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
All right, next item, SRF loan for Crystal Lake watershed management plan discussion.
We've been talking probably about a year, maybe a little bit more, about the Mascoma Lake watershed plan. And the Mascoma Lake Association came to me presenting that. As you guys know, I work with the city of Lebanon, since they're a portion of that as well, and that grant for that is an SRF loan, so the loan process is just a little easier through the city process. So they, they took on that loan and that grant project to do the Mascoma Lake. I was kind of waiting to see as we go through that project, how much of the watershed would actually be included, would it include all of Crystal Lake and their watershed and the other water bodies that we have in town? As we entered into there, we have learned that a small portion of that will be entered in, but it will not be as if Crystal Lake has a watershed management plan as well. So, working with, with Shirley, we had a meeting, I think Dan might have been there too, with DES, just having a discussion, and they, they highly recommended that we talk to the select board about moving forward and doing a Crystal Lake watershed management plan right on the heels of the Mascoma one. I did put in my write-up here for you guys, that it would be up to $100,000, that's what they give for these. But I am working with DES and the consultant to get a better price point, because being on the heels of the Mascoma Lake, when a lot of the work's already gonna be done. So what we would like to do is just have the discussion tonight about the possibility of entering into that. It would require taking a warrant article to the town for an SRF loan up to the $100,000 amount. The caveat to that is the SRF loan comes with 100% forgiveness. So it's, it's as if you're getting a grant, but it needs to run through the loan process.
Well, the loan, the, the forgiveness is automatic.
Well, the forgiveness is automatic once you complete the watershed man.
Is there an interest or fees on the loan?
There may be some interest, there's, there's. The hard part with that is they don't tell you what the interest is or anything until you close out the project and the loan's ready to be issued. So I won't be able to come to you and say, our fees will be about this, but they'll be very minimal compared to the cost of the watershed management plan. I think with all the talk we've been going through with the, you know, the septic plan, the need for stormwater management, all of those things, I think this is a really good project to show that we're, we're really supportive of our lakes and making sure that we have clean water. These watershed management plans will bring some of those projects out of, you know, some of the stormwater management plans, those types of things that we could be working on, and they'll do some additional testing on the lakes that we've been talking about, and they'll take some of the data from the testing we have done and put things together to show us kind of where we should be prioritizing. So I think it's a good project, I think it's something we should move forward. If we do put it on the town warrant for this town meeting, the grant application, I believe, is in May of this year. So it's after the warrant article, we can go ahead and apply and move forward with that grant if approved.
What do you need from us, just a consensus?
I think just a consensus at this time, and we, I've already started crafting a warrant article based on some of their stuff, but we can put that on the warrant for final approval, moving into town.
I missed what SRF means.
It's state revolving fund, it's federal money that runs through the state, it's a revolving fund that they can give loans out of. But they give this loan to us with 100% grant forgiveness.
I see a hand up online, Bob, please, go ahead and unmute yourself and make your comment.
Yes, I truly believe, I mean, you guys went through a lot with the other associations and their value to the town. I think we should really always focus on the lakes, and this is really something, you know, my daddy used to say, if somebody's gonna put money in your hand, never draw your hand away. This is a really good thing for us, and I think, hope you guys approve it, because this is what the lakes need.
Thank you, Bob.
Hi, Dan Reagan, lock in. Mr. Morris, you said this project would come on the heels of the Mascoma project. Why do we have to wait? It seems like there's a lot.
We don't have to wait.
Okay.
We're, that one's already moving. By the time we get the grant and all those things and go through the process, that one's gonna be wrapping up. So it just makes sense that a lot of the data is already gonna be collected, and the timeframe, we're a year behind them already in the process. So about the time that, I believe about the time we're starting, or at least while we're working on that plan, the other plan will be being released.
Okay, thank you. I'm also fully in support of this. I think FB Environmental and DES both said this is for you to do. Yeah, thank you.
No, I, I.
It's a win-win situation, probably. You can't go wrong.
No, I think we should move forward with the warrant article. Is the.
Yes.
This one from the board?
No, I think it's a good idea.
Yep, good idea.
Move forward and draft your warrant article on that item. All right, septic rule, legal rewrite, review, so following the many discussions, we sent, our last discussion of this, we sent the drafts to the lawyer who rewrote, who we did. Well, it says the same thing, just in a very different way.
That's called rewriting everything.
I do have one change. Actually, Dan wrote me today, and under 5F on page three, it says the buyer shall file the site assessment study. That's from the old laws, you guys remembered that law, it just got updated this year. So I'd like to change that to the buyer shall file the septic system evaluation required by that section to the health officer. I'll be double checking that with the attorney, but that just means if you guys move forward with review, we'll have to bring this back to you for final signature. I believe that's the only change at this time, unless you guys decide to make changes in it.
The challenge from the board.
No, I think this makes sense.
Everybody may not have seen it, we did post it online as soon as we got it, but Alicia has it up here if you wanna go through anything. But as stated, it's written a little bit different. According to our attorney, it's written more like a health order. Our last one was maybe more in the lines of incoherence. If this is gonna be moved forward as a health order, he recommends that it's written in this fashion. All the all the substantial information in the last one, in this one, it's just.
Yeah, and structurally, it comes from the health officer, and it's really revised. And would be reviewed with the health officer.
Yes, we have reviewed it with that.
Yep, as well. Can I see a hand up online? I did. John Essler, go ahead and unmute yourself and make your comment.
Good. Hey, by the way, great to hear you folks having that watershed study for Crystal Lake. I think that's a great idea, too. Excuse my cough here. Have you folks received a letter from our attorney?
Yes, we did.
And unfortunately, he's sick and he's not able to be there tonight, but he was supposed to be there to respond to questions. Hopefully you'll respond to that, and we'll have more discussions as that goes on. I'd like to ask a few questions on that, on the proposed rule. So let's see. First question I had was on five, on five item Friday, and about the inspections in the first year. You still feel strongly, you must have these inspections, and they must be in the first year, it sounds like?
The, I think it speaks for itself, yes.
Okay, that's where all the expense comes in, the, what I feel is the unnecessary expense for the homeowners to have to inspect their systems irrespective of how they're working. And of course, because we have never identified on this lake, or on any lake that I know of, or you haven't identified, any septic systems that are injurious to public health or a nuisance. Am I correct in that?
I think you're making statements that have been gone through in the past four or five months, and we're happy to listen to you make them again, but I don't think we're gonna have a lot of back and forth this evening.
Well, I'm asking a question. Have you identified any nuisances or septic systems that are injurious to public health?
This isn't really part of the public hearing. We have serious public hearings. We're asked to look at this as a board, and that is our intention tonight, not to conduct a conversation.
Interesting, okay, so only my comments, alrighty. And I guess you won't tell me then, who is evaluating these inspection reports, is that correct? Can you tell me that?
This, this is a health order, and it'll be run through the health officer.
All right, in the first year, considering everybody, almost everybody on all the lakes is gonna have to have an inspection done, this could be one heck of a workload on this person, this health officer. I hope at some point you will publish this health officer's credentials, whether he's a licensed septic system inspector or a licensed septicing system designer. Somebody of that, of that ability should be the person reviewing these evaluations. And I hope.
Sounds like you're misunderstanding a few things. The health officer's not inspecting the systems.
I didn't say that. I said in, looking at the inspection reports.
Yeah. So if, if the board votes to implement this, then the, the actual implementation program will be laid out going forward. And just to correct one thing, that 5A, it says they have to be inspected within, within one year if they, or an ISDS not inspected within the prior six years. uh and I I S D S not inspected within the prior six years of the adoption, within a year of the effective date. So people who have had their systems inspected within the last six years can file that inspection and do not have to have a new inspection within the first year. That's the people who have not had an inspection. So so I'd like you to summarize your comments.
I understand.
I mean, I I fully understand that you're opposed to this regulation and that you'd like to go through it line by line again. We've done that several times as a board. So if you could summarize your your comments, I would appreciate it.
Well, first first I just want to mention what Eric said. Eric, I understand that. That's what I said. Most systems will have to be inspected. That probably a few of them may have been inspected already. Uh. A problem I have with five C is that this inspection report and these reports must be submitted to the health officer. And that's where the problem comes in. If they could be kept uh just to the homeowner, they would get the education that you want them to get without sending them into the town. I believe the town's going to have to hire another person to handle this job. Uh I want to mention something that uh we've looked at recently. Try to estimate what the flow is through this lake, and there's no really good number, but somebody had already estimated the flow over the dam. And we said maybe the flow to from Bicknell Brook or over the dam is about two million gallons a day. I did a rough estimate of how much water is being used by all the residents on Crystal Lake during the summer. And I said, that's about twenty thousand gallons a day, which is about one percent of what might be coming in over Bicknell Brook. And that's why I think this is a really excessive rule. We're not addressing the real problem, which is Bicknell Brook. Bicknell Brook's load of phosphorus is at least twice that that was normally in the lake. You know, and that's there because it's Bicknell Brook has been cut down. And I guess I know you want to make this as quickly as possible. Um so I'll just wrap it up by saying what I've normally said. I hope they will discard this proposed rule. It's causing a lot of problems. You haven't seen the problems yet that it's going to cause, and we, the homeowners, are aware of the fantastic problems that are going to be caused by this useless inspection, an inspection that will not improve performance or improve the health of the lake. And that's what we're all interested in. Uh second, I hope again you'll reconsider going to the sonapee rule, which is a basic rule, which smart lake sonapee that drinks their water thinks it's good enough. And they've looked at the inspection requirements and decided not to have it. And then third, I hope again you'll set up a committee to study problems on the lake, to study the lake and all the conditions around it. And then bakes based on that prioritize actions that should be taken. And whatever comes in there regarding the septic, that'd be fine once we have some data rather than suppositions. How's that for summarizing?
Very good. Thank you very much, Sean. I appreciate your comments.
I'm just.
Right here. Remember to say your name for their minutes.
Keith Thomas. I'd like to know who is the evaluator and how much does the evaluator cost in addition to having the septic tank pumped? Because I have mine pumped every three years, even though I have two people living in the in the and I have a I have a tank for for five bedroom house. So I get pumped and I require everybody never to put any oils or grease or anything down in my septic system. Since when I have also a um a thing before it goes into septic system, I have a uh a a filter on it. Okay, so who's this evaluator? How much more is it going to cost me? Because it's already costing me like six hundred dollars to get my get the tank pump. So, you know, and 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 you're talking about if you've had it evaluated in six years. I mean, I've had mine, like I said, pumped every three years, no matter what. Okay.
Yep, so so the the inspections will be done by state certified people. Um we at the town don't regulate costs, so the the cost estimates have been highly varied from from folks um from as little as a couple hundred dollars to some have said a couple thousands. But um it seems that some were done this past fall at the rate of a few hundred dollars. Um but again, the town's not regulating the price or the cost and can't really make statements on on what they are. Uh but those are numbers that have been said in the public hearings. Um.
Because I I find that to be another owner's thing on a on a household around the lake. And do we really need to have an evaluator? Can the health official do it here? Uh the other thing is is that um it could be hard or very difficult. Right now, it takes me like a month to make sure that I get a guy out there to pump my septic system, okay, or the or the tanks. Uh and so how how difficult is it going to be now that I have to go and get the evaluator and get the pumper to get to coordinate the timeframes?
I'll ask a question. This is listed on the agenda as septic rule legal rewrite review. This is not listed. It's a public discussion at which we have several public hearings already.
Yeah, I'm sorry that I missed the.
I'm sorry, too, but we actually have a long agenda to get through that has been published.
And I just.
I'm getting a little cranky.
You know, I.
I apologize.
I I really think that that's unnecessary. Okay.
Could I?
So go ahead.
Um I would say so the question he asked though was the the definition of evaluator, which is right on page one in letter A, which says a septic system evaluator licensed by N H P E S. And he didn't have the benefit of coming to other meetings. And so I will say those are all listed. Every single person who holds a license that the state of New Hampshire oversees, be it a hairdresser, be it a doctor, be it a lawyer, they're all listed and credentialed with their credentials online of the state of New Hampshire. We at least have very nicely posted that link online, so you would be picking one of those.
And and as has been submitted, the town will be working with people. There will be time. Uh you know, they have a year from the day of the regulation, and the town will be working with people who are moving in the right direction and doing the right things on this uh implementation thing.
Will 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 those evaluators list the prices?
That's going to be between the homeowner and the business, just as any transaction would be. The town's not going to get involved in private turn in in uh pricing. All right, other uh. One. First of all, I got. Sorry, could you just say your name for the record?
Apologize, you know, I'm.
He's kind of hard to hear.
I'm at a big disadvantage.
Could you say your name first?
Oh, David Timodell.
Thank you.
I live on forty-four Lewin Road in Enfield, New Hampshire on Spectacle Pond. Okay, I'm at a big disadvantage because I ran out of the house and left my hair in a tone, so I can't hear nothing. So I'm yelling because I'm trying to hear myself. But I want you to know that I totally respect all the work you guys are doing because I was involved in the same system in the seventies. Been here since sixty-three, okay? So appreciate all the work that's being done. But when it becomes a point of concern for the homeowner, um I understand the problem that you're looking at where you have Mascoma Lake, Crystal Lake, um Spectacle Pond, George Pond, or whatever that other one is there. There's also McDaniel's Marsh in there. These are all huge basins where all the water is gathered because of the proximity of the geometry. Everything feeds into these. Everything feeds into them. They then feed into each other, and then they all go into one body of water, Mascoma Lake. Because of what happened last year in twenty twenty-three, with the amount of rainfall that was and all the flooding that was involved in what has happened is what's driving this concern, right? And to the point right now, you have no evidence whatsoever of any contamination of the water from Leach Fields. Is that true?
No, so again, we're not going to go back through everything. Um if you look back at what D E S told us and said in the meeting with D E S Paul, you'll you'll hear that question.
Like me, I I I'm in the middle of five lots, and we bought the property twenty-five years ago. And the first thing I did was put in a state approved septic system at Leach Field. And the other lots above me and below me are still uh outhouses and have been there fifty to seventy-five years and never had any issues. I, as a homeowner, am not going to allow my system to contaminate the waters that I swim in, that I play in with the kids, devalue my property or anything. And my concern is that based on the first or couple of drafts that I see, you're just signaling out the people that live directly on the water and not anybody else. And everything that feeds these things also should be taken into consideration. All the water that comes down from McDaniel's Marsh through the town of Enfield Center, all the water that flows into the Mascoma River out of Canaan, all the way through, everything should be considered when you're applying these rules here to these. We I wrote a letter to the town manager. We're your first and best defense against contamination. We are not going to allow that to contaminate where we live, where the kids swim and everything else. So my concern is um I can understand the rules, and I I also pump mine out every three years only because of the size of my family. And to be honest, the last two or three years I've had it pumped out, they said, Dave, there's nothing in here, you know, and I I still you know, when we bought it, the place was built in fifty-nine, so we didn't know what was in there. But my concern is is that whatever rules and regulations that you folks apply to the watersheds in the town of Enfield, considering all the big bodies of water, should also include all the streams and everything that's flowing into these bodies of water to make everybody that lives along these, the Boys Camp Road, all that watershed coming down through there. All that should be fall into the same rooms. And because it's a multi-town situation, Spectacle Pond is half Enfield, half Crafton, I think it is.
Yeah.
And then I'm not sure if Springfield's involved or not, but Lebanon's involved with Mascoma Lake. Whatever rules that you folks impose on us in the town of Enchil should all Lebanon, Canaan, Enfield, Crafton, all should agree on the same rules. It should be just one town doing one thing and another town doing another thing. But there's a lot of water that comes off the watershed that feeds these bodies of water, not just the homeowner that's living on the shoreline. Now, we're doing probably the biggest contamination you got is the migrating waterfowl. Everybody up around it puts fences around their property to keep them off the lawn because you can't even walk on the lawn if you got fifteen or twenty of them there. And and they're they're pooping in the water. So that's where most of your contamination is.
Thank you very much for your comment. And considering the entire watershed is is something that is that is also happening.
So he said, thank you very much. He paraphrased what you had said, and he appreciates your comments.
What what I did was one more comment I did was can I I did a lot of writing. Can I can I take this home and I'll retype it so everybody can read it? And I'll pass it back into you guys so you can consider it as you're as you're looking at the rules and regulations and consider these things that
is, yes.
They should be applied to the to the to the rules.
Yes, you can certainly send any any comments you have to add, and he distributes comments to the entire board.
He said, yes, you can give them to Ed Morris, and he will distribute them to him.
Yeah.
Thanks. I appreciate the help.
Thank you.
Sorry about the inconvenience.
All right, I only see one more hand up. Someone get one more comment, and then the board's going to discuss this amongst ourselves. So Bob Kusak, please unmute yourself and make a comment.
Yeah, I agree with John. Time to move on.
Okay, thank you, Bob. All right. So for the board, what is your pleasure regarding the uh legal rewrite of the septic?
Ed, you felt that the change which you were mentioning a few minutes ago was necessary that we couldn't vote on this tonight until you had a chance to have it rereviewed?
I don't think so. I think you can, but that change needs to be made.
So if we implement this tonight with an affirmative vote, we could come back again and accept the change at another another date?
We could just.
Or you can approve it as that change.
We can't accept it with that change now?
I could come back and ask you to reconsider, but.
Okay.
I just have one little thing on page one, um line item four, the under health officer. I'd like it to say there, designee, we don't need to be deciding if yeah, whose gender, right? Like, we're going to stay out of that and it can just be whoever.
Yep.
Leave it wide open.
Any comments from the board?
Ed, read the change that you want to make one more time, if you would, please.
In five F on page three, sale of waterfront property. Within thirty days after the sale of any waterfront property, subject to RSA four eighty-five A thirty-nine, the buyer shall file the and then the change is septic system evaluation that required by that section to the health.
Mm-hmm, right.
With the changes as noted, I would like to make a motion.
Second that. Well, let's read them. Let's look.
Fast movement today.
With the changes as noticed, I vote to approve the septic system health order proposed by the health officer and to direct town manager or their designee to complete preparation and record the regulations with the town clerk and post copies of the regulations in two public places to go into effect on December first, two thousand and twenty-four.
Countdown, second. Discussion of the motion on the table.
I'm thinking time.
I was just I kind of got the vibe that like a little time would be done.
Can hear you. It says no earlier than December one in the letter we got.
Are you? Yeah, after staying, so I would give a little time.
We can do that and leave a little time, but.
Do you want to amend your motion to January first?
Well, I kind of like December first just to get the ball started. And I'm afraid I share a slight amount of frustration with John that I'd like to get the ball started. Remember, as a select board, we can change this as soon as we want. And 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 we can, but we can also adapt it. We can modify it. We can accept concerns from folks, appeals, if you will, for extensions as necessary, absolutely.
Literally not what I was interested in. I was reading what Ed wrote and trying to be considerate. I read a December one.
We have a motion with a with a time. If someone would like to propose a amendment, they can do so. Otherwise, we'll vote on the motion as read and stay.
I don't have strong feelings.
Are you all right with December one then, essence?
Well, we could like I I don't want to waste time on it because we.
So the December one date might cause us to have to come back to you if we don't get all the work done in time.
So do you feel that we need to use January one for your administrative reasons?
It would be a little bit easier.
Then I would propose to amend my motion without rereading it if I can to say January first, two thousand twenty-five.
Second. So we have a motion on the table to implement this health order. All in favor, say aye.
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 Closed. Will go into effect on January first, twenty twenty.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Another big item. Cybersecurity policy. Yeah, all right. As um as people probably know, the town of Enfield was the victim of a cybersecurity fraud and that that's a good word.
Good word.
We had some emergency meetings last week it week. The uh basically a staff member was tricked into changing a bank account number for one of our vendors, and then the next payment to that vendor was directed to the fraudulent bank account. As was said, and Ed, you want to give us where? Ed, you want to give us where we are? There's not a lot more information, but why don't you go ahead and, and summarize sort of what you've summarized and then we'll talk through.
You want the detail?
Yeah, I think we do. I think we want the details. You know, this is our first meeting since we found out about it.
Yeah.
Um, we want to say everything that we can, and I know you have it the most coherent.
Just as well in this.
Yeah, so we're going to read what we've been talking about. Um, we found out about this at the last select board meeting. Um, as I told you guys, I was actually on my way to the select board meeting in my car about five thirty-five ish or sometime in there. And I received a call from our treasurer that, um, she got a call from Mascoma Bank, they got a call from Bank of America that, um, it looks like we had made a, a very large payment into, into a fraudulent bank account. Immediately, during the meeting, immediately, I called the, um, our Primex, we have a, that's our insurance company. We have a twenty-four seven cybersecurity line that we can call, so we called them. Um, I was in and out of the meeting the whole night with calls from them and the Atom Group, which is their third-party forensic team that starts looking at, you know, where the, where a breach may have happened, looking into the details of that. Um, talked with them, got them employees' phone numbers, those types of things, so we could start the interview process immediately that night. And then they were in contact with the, the Secret Service to get the ball rolling. The next morning I talked with the police department, filed a police report. They also called the FBI and the Secret Service and we got information rolling. Um, back up a little bit the night before, I also hooked the Atom Group up with SimQuest, our IT group to get them full access to our computer network. So, um, we started moving right away. Um, I do want to let the, the public know that, um, following a comprehensive review, the total of the fraudulent amount, well, like I said, was large. It was to the Public Safety Fund in the amount of seven hundred and forty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Um, we have been informed that approximately four hundred and fifty thousand of that has been frozen in an account that will be returned to the town at some time. Um, Mascoma Bank is coordinating with Bank of America to recover those funds. Paperwork's already been filed, things are happening, but it will take some time to get that back. Since receiving the information, um, we continue to work with our cybersecurity team and the US Secret Service trying to, trying to get any details we can get on to, how they got information, how they got into our system or someone else's system. And possibly maybe crawl some, all some of that money back even more. Um, we're also working with our insurance company. We do have some cybersecurity insurance. Depending the outcome of the investigation and what they find, um, we may be able to get a little bit of recuperation from them to help minimize the impact as much as possible. I don't know if I want to use the word good news, but because it's part of the Public Safety Building Fund, it's, it doesn't affect the twenty twenty-four budget immediately, so it gives us some time to, to work through the issues, understand fully what might be coming back and, and how it may affect the town in the long run. Over the past couple of weeks, I've been working with the employee that this happened with. And we have come together to a mutual agreement that, um, continued deployment with the town would not be beneficial to either party. So, um, we are going to be parting ways with that employee and as we've heard earlier, we're currently accepting applications. Um, we do want to accept our, extend our gratitude to the Secret Service, Mascoma Bank and Bank of America and our IT, partners for everything that they've done. Um, it was a pretty swift response. You know, in this world of cybersecurity attacks, the fact that Bank of America was able to secure those funds so quickly and, and stop some of it, it was a testament to how closely they're watching things. So, um, with that, um, you know, we'll continue working on this with everything that we have, bringing information forward as soon as we get it.
All right. Um, thank you for the summary. That sort of concisely captures what happened, captures what we know. There's a lot of unknowns still. Um, investigations will take time before we reach a conclusion of this. Uh, one of the things the select board will be taking on is, um, a full review of all of our financial policies and, and whatnot, including, um, in addition to discuss tonight, immediately, uh, fraud policy. Uh, we have drafts in front of us. Are there comments from the board on this draft to new addition to the fraud policy?
I have one, Eric.
Yeah.
Um, page two, section three, um, under number one EFT cap. I was, and this isn't, this is as discussed, but I wanted to, I was just thinking about it in practicality where there's the parentheses, the town's current cybersecurity insurance coverage, that's gonna, you know, I know that's a very good intent, but, um, it won't age well because anything you have to track doesn't age well usually in policy. So I'm wondering if we say that, or the town's current cybersecurity insurance coverage, if less than seventy-five thousand. God forbid it lowered, right? I'd just rather be, you know, seventy-five or whichever, or whichever is lower, some language like that. That way you guys don't have to babysit this policy, um, each time maybe we have an insurance change.
So you're suggesting exceeding seventy-five thousand dollars or the, or the.
The town, or the town, or the town's current cybersecurity insurance coverage.
Whichever is less.
Whichever is.
Whoever is less.
Or prohibited.
Yeah, I can agree with that.
I just want to make it easier to.
In, in between, because even though we look at it every year, Ed may change insurance coverage at any point during the year and shouldn't have to worry about coming back to us to, for a revision of the policy.
Right.
Um, where, I know we're saying this is going to go into the fraud policy. How do we see this fitting in?
Um, as we've discussed, um, I think, I think we need to get away from having individual financial policies and I think we need to incorporate these all into one large financial policy that covers everything. I think coming, I mean, I see it right now as coming out of what we have now in our fraud policy, we would move into a a kind of a cybersecurity portion of our fraud policy. The current fraud policy we have and a fraud policy a lot of towns have doesn't actually cover the cybersecurity side of things. It's more internal fraud, but I think this is a good extension of that into the cybersecurity realm.
I see it as one larger policy encompassing the existing as well as this revision to be reviewed on an annual basis. You know, uh, we'd been reviewing these things approximately immediately after town meeting, when a new board is seated. That seems like a good date. So having it prepared for that timeline makes a lot of sense, but this should obviously be implemented immediately.
Yeah, this is already actually in staff. It's already been implemented and if we make changes, those changes will be.
Yeah, yeah.
I was wondering more in terms of like, so like section numbering and actual, how do we get this on the books so that it's on the books? And then we could come back and do the larger incorporation.
Yeah, no, I mean, this could just be an addendum.
Yeah.
To the back of the fraud policy. And yeah, so we need to do this immediately to clarify any confusion that there may have been. I don't think there was confusion. It sounds like it was very clear what the procedures were and the procedures were not followed. And this will further clarify that to people.
And then a process of, of reviewing it on a yearly basis. But.
Well, like I said, I think that'll be easier if we merge.
Have a restructure.
One, because some of them, some of our financial policies are going to be renewed annually and some are not. If we merge them all into one long financial policy to be reviewed annually and immediately following.
Makes sense.
I'll take the timeframe out of there because that often gets tough and, you know, give us a few meetings to get it in front of it.
Yeah.
I think online.
All right. So do you have a hand up in the audience?
Yeah.
Please.
Is there a set limit that you have to, you know, a dollar amount that you set that anything over that you have to really do something special in order to clear this?
Yeah, so, um, we have pulled back on the ability to do electronic transfers to the limit of what is currently our cybersecurity thing and everything else will have to be paid by check.
We have other, we have other policies that are already in place where multiple people have to approve payments.
Based on dollar amounts? Or everything?
Everything.
Even small amounts?
Even small amounts needed. At least two people look through it. It's usually three or four people that look through it.
But, but the addition here is to pull back on electronic transfers while we wrap our heads around everything. Go ahead.
Just, just a quick one. I think, yeah, you ought to do this today.
Yeah.
I also think you want to get somebody who's a cybersecurity specialist to write the policy.
Yep.
Yeah, do it in-house. We spend a lot on consultants for other things. This one I think might be a big reason to have.
Let me take that out there. Yep. I think that that probably goes to a lot of our financial policies actually to have an external review and
Yeah.
and get, and bring ourselves, um, up, up to date, make sure we're, we're not missing anything. Uh, guys, do you see some hands online? Uh, let's start with, uh, Dave Buffet. Please unmute yourself and make your comment.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, uh, ju- just to clarify, this is the first time I've heard full numbers and for those of us attending remotely and uh, probably some of the public there, um, may not have heard those numbers. If I'm doing the math correctly, uh, a, a total of, um, seven hundred and forty thousand dollars was initially diverted. Four hundred thousand was, um, uh, recovered or frozen anyway. And, um, how much of the remaining three hundred and forty thousand is covered by our current insurance?
So we, we don't have firm numbers on that because of the way the investigation's going to go forward? Now, Ed, you want to give any comments in that?
No, it was seven hundred and forty-two thousand, two ninety-seven was the initial. And then we have heard, and we have not been able to confirm, but we have heard that four hundred and fifty thousand has been frozen in an account to come back. The insurance is, as Eric mentioned, it's kind of yet to be fully considered. You know how insurance companies work and they have to look through everything and then they'll tell us what they're going to, to give us base back on that. So, um, we're looking on that. We don't want to.
If they gave us the full amount, how much would it, would it be?
It appears right now that we would get up to seventy-five thousand dollars, but again, we don't want to paint any picture that that's what we think it's going to be or anything like that. I think we keep these numbers at what I would consider worst case scenario and hopefully we can get some money back, some different things come forward and we can be happily surprised.
Ho- hopefully it's not worst case.
I think it's important though, this is a fluid situation. The Secret Service is still waiting, working on it. And so we don't know all of the facts yet and that's going to
Yeah.
change.
Yeah, yeah. We are, we are gonna have to be patient, um, to get final numbers.
I, I understand, but in my, in my profession, profession, we were always trained to, uh, uh, think of what the worst could be and be prepared for it.
Yep, yeah. All right. Thank you. Anything else, David?
No, that's it. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, Bob Cusick, go ahead and unmute yourself and make your comments.
Yeah, I, uh, I want everybody to understand that there's like fifteen different kinds of these scams. If you'll do any research, you'll know. I have some friends in the FBI who told me that, uh, there are incredible amounts of people that are subject to this. I think the town uh, with their, uh, with their propensity and their policies, uh, did a very good job. If not for the, um, the non-performance of one of our employees, this would have never, ever come to pass. The only suggestion I would make is that we should forecast every year what the maximum amount of an individual dispersment is and have sufficient coverage to take care of those dispersments. This year, we've had a lot of big dispersments constructed. Projects are always huge when it comes to individual dispersment. So we probably should have had a little bit more insurance, but once again, I think, you know, the town, the manager and everybody else has done an amazing job in stopping this before it got too out of hand. And don't forget, w- we were subject to a crime where we had a situation with the trustees of the trust fund not too long ago where they basically did not follow through with any real, real constructive controls over what they were doing. So I, I would like to say that I think Ed's done a wonderful job and I think that you guys are doing a great job. So I think we should be really very satisfied with this outcome, albeit that it would be better if it never happened. That's it.
Thank you, Bob. All right. What is the pleasure of the board?
I make a motion that we adopt this addendum to the fraud policy for immediate implementation with the recommended revision to section three, number one.
Second.
Question of the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Right. And I will look into having a professional.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. But this is the first step. It's a lot of work.
And we also talked at a phone call about how much more does it cost to get more coverage for the future?
And I, I think we all were in agreement on that.
Yeah, and we really need to look at all of our financial policies, how they interact.
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely.
And have a professional look at all of that because there's probably more interaction than many of us appreciate, certainly myself. All right. Uh, year and the transfers to and from reserves and trusts.
I'm going to screenshot because it'd be easier for me to read it on the screen then. So, um, end of the year, we have to make the votes for trustees of trust funds. Most of the things that you have before you don't require votes because they've already been approved by select board vote in the past or by town meeting. So there's really just a handful of things. Um, as far as deposits go, we have six hundred thousand dollars that will go into the CIP Capital Reserve Fund based on two warrant articles. No motion is required for that. We have a net amount of five thousand dollars to be deposited into the Police Recruitment and Retention Bonus Trust Fund. The town meeting raised and appropriated twenty thousand dollars. There were fifteen thousand dollars in expenses. So that's the amount that would go into that fund. We had thirty-six hundred dollars in cemetery lot sales, which go into the Cemetery Maintenance Trust Fund that had town meeting approval. We sold four dollars in trail maps and will go into the trail map fund. Old Home Days has no deposit as the expenses exceeded the revenues by twenty-one dollars and thirty cents. And we have two amounts, twenty-five thousand dollars each for, um, deposit into the Municipal Water System Capital Reserve Fund and the Municipal Sewer Capital Reserve Funds, which are budgeted items. Now, we move on to expenses. The, the first was, the first ten are simply, uh, loans that we have where uh, the payments are already voted to come from the capital reserve, the CIP Capital Reserve Fund. We have a DPW truck that we have a payment that comes in December. That amount we don't know yet because it's not until we actually pay it that we'll know exactly what the interest is. That might vary just a little bit. But that also had a town meeting vote, so you don't have to worry about it. It's just informational. Then we have, uh, Oak Hill Road Bridge Loan Payment. I another one that they're not actually requesting money, the sidewalk improvements that we ended up doing, our our town crew did a great job with sidewalk improvements on their own.
We will need that.
You will? It's on hold. It's on hold at the moment, but we're not. So we're not requesting any reimbursement. We'd have to take a loan out first. Then we have.
Never mind, not the loan.
We're not taking the loan now.
Yeah, we're just. It it says that the borrowing authority remains there, but we don't need to tap it at this time.
Yeah, some of the money was going to come from CIP.
If if we, any sidewalk money that is going to come from the CIP Reserve Fund, well, you have to get a specific amount and you can vote that at your next meeting.
It's actually listed as six thousand dollars and change.
What is?
Maple Street.
Oh, that's that's something else.
Oh, that's different. Excuse me. You're right.
So item fourteen is, um, Employee and Retiree Benefit Trust Fund. That pays for certain qualifying expenses. If somebody, um, retires, we have to pay out. Sicker vacation time, it covers that as well as some of our, uh, health insurance benefit that the town pays for. It's at three thousand fifty-four dollars and ninety cents right now. It may change ever so slightly, whatever we happen to expend by the time this goes to the trustees of trust funds in a couple of weeks. Then we have the two hundred and forty-four thousand sixty-four dollars from the Library Building Capital Reserve Fund, which was part of the warrant article. For the Whitney Hall improvements, and so that would come to the town. We have a hundred and eighty-five thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars and sixty-four cents in Mascoma Lakeside Park Trust Fund expenses. That, I don't have the number with me right now, the the balance of that fund. Can well support that withdrawal. We do have. One that's in the CIP plan. That needs a vote is number seventeen for DPW ceiling fans. And that came in at five thousand one hundred and twenty dollars. Old Home Days is town manager authorized, so don't won't require a vote, twenty-one dollars and thirty cents. We have three purchases with cash from the CIP Capital Reserve Fund that will. Will need a vote and the votes have been written up for you. We have the forty-seven thousand, six hundred forty-six dollars and seventy cents for the twenty twenty-four cruiser. Six thousand, six hundred eighteen dollars and sixty-one cents for Maple Street Improvements, which is much lower than what we anticipated. And sixty-six thousand and sixty-one dollars for a new sidewalk trench. Uh, um, the the last items are funds that were discontinued at town meeting. We. We're discontinuing the funds. But the us, the like amount is being, was raised and appropriated to be deposited. That's already on the deposit side, so all of this would come back to the town. These numbers are not exact. Uh, these were given to me just just around town meeting time so that we knew what we were really looking at. And so they're going to vary slightly, and I have been informed that the last of the funds have been recovered from that GL beyond income. Fraud. And so we're simply waiting for a check and then they're going to take all of those funds that they've. Had returned and disperse those percentage-wise to the accounts. Uh, where they belong, and after that's done, they will have a check written for these funds that were being closed.
And we don't have to do anything about that because we town vote.
Town, you'd already voted it. So you have a couple of motions. One, one motion for deposits that need to be made. Couple of these, well, one of them, I don't have to, but it's not a bad idea. And then the withdrawals that we need motions for.
Okay, do we need individual motions for each bullet item?
No, you can do one motion that includes the bullet.
One for deposits, one for withdrawal.
Yes.
I move to approve the deposit of five thousand dollars into the Police Recruitment and Retention Bonus Trust Fund. Which equals the twenty thousand dollar town meeting appropriation plus fifteen thousand in actual two thousand twenty-four expenditures. Twenty-five thousand into the Municipal Water System Capital Reserve Fund in accordance with the twenty twenty-four budget and. Twenty-five thousand into the Municipal Sewer System Capital Reserve Fund in accordance with the twenty twenty-four budget. Do I have a second?
Seconds.
And discussion of deposits. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Yeah, deposits are prudent.
Withdrawals. Move to approve the withdrawal of one hundred eighty-five thousand, one hundred twenty dollars and sixty-four cents. From the Mascoma Lakeside Park Trust Fund for qualified improvement expenses and. Forty-seven thousand, six hundred forty-six dollars and seventy cents for a police cruiser. Six thousand, six hundred eighteen dollars and sixty-one cents for Maple Street Improvements. Sixty-six thousand, sixty-one dollars for a sidewalk tractor and five thousand, one hundred twenty dollars. For Public Works Ceiling Fans from the Capital Improvement Program Capital Reserve Fund pursuant to the Capital Improvement Program. Two thousand twenty-five, two thousand thirty.
Seconds.
Discussion of the withdrawals. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Can I ask a clarifying question just for my education, Eric? Um, just this trail map thing. So trail maps, I think, are two dollars or something, so it's like two trail maps. And I'm wondering if the accounting cost is higher than the revenue. Where does that, who is, there's a trail map fund. Where does that ma- money go?
If somebody comes into the office and wants mapping, give us two dollars and it goes through our select board, uh, receipts. So that's random things, um, recycle.
Right, right. The trail map fund, what is, who who's an expense?
Uh, who can expend from that?
Obviously. I'm just asking, like, wondering why we're collecting two dollars when it probably costs us seventeen dollars.
The town manager manager is authorized to expend the funds. It has to be used for reprinting new maps.
Okay, I learned something. I'm not sure I wanted to know it. Thank you.
I think it it comes down to where we're not allowed to make profit on stuff, so our choice is either print the maps provided for free or spend revenue printing maps.
So we're, so we're just, yeah, slowing the time down. We put two dollars and it's costing us seventeen or whatever dollars in counting.
It's a fair, fair thing to bring up to make you consider. All right.
It's an act of Congress to change it.
Next item, acceptance of donation to Community Nursing Fund in the value of two thousand dollars. From the Mascoma Bank Foundation.
I move, we accept the, uh, donation by the Mascoma Bank Foundation, the amount of two thousand dollars to the Community Nursing Program with thanks.
All second that. Sessions, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you very much, Mascoma Bank. It's very generous. Appreciate that.
Can we get a total for one of our meetings on where we're at? I don't know if I.
Yeah, I found, yeah, we can add that.
Just let they end the year and a.
Yeah, I think we started in September when they sent us an update.
It'd be kind of neat to see how far they've gotten.
All right, we have an abatement slash refund request.
We got an idea.
I went through all of that and I think Norm's recommendation is excellent.
Ed, do you want to, uh, sort of summarize what Norm's recommendation is and, uh?
I'll take it then.
Oh, okay. Tracy, do you want to summarize it?
It's about twelve pages long.
No, 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 there's one page, by the way. It's somebody's property card was incorrect. And he's recommending.
Yeah, he didn't.
An abatement based on the correction to the property card. This is something that happens where. Somebody's card is factually incorrect and therefore they need an adjustment and an abatement.
If you look at that, I I I looked this up online. That is the weirdest state lot I've ever seen in my life. Uh, literally the only usable land, it's a three acre lot. The only usable land is what the house is sitting on.
Yeah.
I think she has a great case for getting an abatement based on her land, but anyway.
Well, and like, it had three bathrooms, should have been two.
Right.
Yeah, there's factually incorrect items on here, so that Norm's recommendation makes a lot of sense based on the property card.
Absolutely.
It says in here.
Yeah.
In twenty twenty-two, she was over assessed thirty-two thousand and twenty twenty-three was thirty-four hundred.
Good Lord.
Yeah.
Oh, listen.
Yeah. I think it makes sense to deny the twenty twenty-one, like you said, and.
Oh, now wait a minute. Where, I I can't find that page.
I'm trying to find it too.
The letter from Norm?
Yeah, well. There was a letter from Julie Huntley, was there not?
Yeah, exactly.
I'm sorry, Julie Huntley, Norm recommends, yes. Yes, that was from Julie at the last paragraph that Norm recommends.
Yeah.
In twenty twenty-two, she was oversessed for the unfinished upper portion story and one bath for a total of thirty-two to six hundred. In value in twenty-three, she was oversessed for one bathroom for a total value of thirty-four hundred. Norm recommends denying the twenty twenty-one abatement request. He recommends you refund taxes paid for the twenty-two over assessment in the amount of eight hundred thirty-nine dollars and forty-five cents plus interest. Twelve sixteen twenty-two and refund taxes paid for the twenty twenty-three over assessment in the amount of ninety-two dollars and thirty-four cents plus interest. From twelve thirteen, two thousand twenty-three.
That's what I was.
I would make a motion that we accept, um, the recommendation from the assessor and. Abate the property taxes as written. Is that enough?
I would.
Second.
Yeah.
He did a lot of research. I think it's well done.
Yeah.
There are further discussion of the motion. All in favor of the main taxes, uh, was the president, did he say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The Norm's, the assessors' recommendation to.
I need that last page.
All right. We have many ways next to the FHWA Byway Grant Approval.
Yes, um, there's nothing in your packet. I landed it. I added this at the last minute. This is, um. I don't want to put too much on the state, but in their notice of funding opportunity, they put in there that, um, this is due to the federal government on December sixteenth. They have. They thought that they would be accepting applications on or around December first. I got notification a week or a couple of weeks ago, probably, that they were, they wanted them due tomorrow. So I've been working on this furiously and, um. Working with Pathways and Upper Valley Lake Sunape Regional Planning Commission to get some documentation together, um, from Pathways, um. We've had the project engineered now, um, they're they're estimating a price a lot higher than we went in last time. But they're thinking a total cost estimate with contingency and everything for the parking and the trail to be built. At a amount of one million nine hundred nineteen. Nineteen doesn't seem right. Let me pull this up. Just to make sure I got my number right. One million nine hundred and twelve dollars and nine, nine and one, million nine hundred. Twelve thousand, nine hundred dollars for total amount. With one million, five hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred and twenty. Dollars coming from the federal government. But one million, five thirty, three twenty coming from the federal government and three hundred and eighty-two thousand, five eighty coming from the town as a.
Say that town match again for me again.
Three hundred and eighty-two thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars. A complete project. So if we want to move forward and put in for this grant to to build the trail along four A and to build. Parking along Main Street. We can do that. I did talk to the state. To see if maybe, I mean, it's a big number, so I was talking to them about pulling the three hundred and forty-two thousand dollars out for the Main Street parking. And they said they would recommend not shortchanging yourself, that if you score well on this, they'll give you the full amount if you would like to do that. So, um. And it would be a small amount for the, down about six, maybe sixty thousand dollars of that, three hundred and eighty-two would be for the Main Street parking.
How much for the Main Street parking?
The total.
No, no, just the Main Street parking you just said.
Yeah, the total of Main Street is three hundred and forty-two thousand, three hundred.
The worst case scenario, we win the grant. The state decides they're going to punish us instead. We could say, I guess we're not building it because we don't have three hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars or three hundred and forty-two extra. Is that? I'm there. I'm just nervous about like a state, like they'll likely pay versus they don't pay.
Well, the state won't pay it.
Who's going to pay the three forty-two?
The three eighty-two?
On Main, well, you said Main Street, Park Eighty-three forty-two.
Well, that's part of this whole grant.
So we have to pay the three eighty-two with no help.
Three eighty-two.
We own all of it.
But.
They get.
But we're.
I know.
But we're, well, but in this case, we're using parking that has already been part of the Lakeside Park Plan as the match.
No, no.
What?
No, this would be new parking.
This is new parking, okay.
This is along Main Street.
It's not part of the Mascoma Lakeside Park. It's something we have been talking about doing anyway.
Okay.
We're only going to find.
We're going to envision the match will come.
They're they're gonna, I think they're going to cut into the side edge and make it perpendicular or parallel angled parking.
It would be parallel, parallel parking along Main Street.
Only parallel on Main Street? Okay, only parallel on Main Street.
About fifteen spaces.
So if we applied for the grant and we later decided to cut out forty thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars and perhaps self-perform that aspect, we could do that.
Well, if you apply for the grant, you're going to get awarded the grand in whole or not. Based on that. If you wanted to cut the parking out, I'd recommend you cut that out now and we take it out of the total if you want to put in for the grant.
I think we either put in for it as a whole project or we.
Agreed.
I'm nervous about.
What's the timeline? When would we need to come up with three hundred eighty-two thousand dollars?
Probably twenty twenty-six. Time frame.
And we'd have to go to town meeting with that, figure and get it approved.
It's made a part of CIP.
No. Yeah, if he doesn't have that, I'd dash.
Not, yeah, the CIP, not the fund, CIP plan.
We do it there fully.
Which allows financing.
We can come up with the match however we want.
So we could try to fund it. Funderies. But there are people, there's a lot of people have a lot of interest in the success of Main Street.
And there's, I guess I would say the charrette, which visioning session that took place last Thursday. I think it's fair to say that the number one topic was parking. At the end of the day, like the number of stickies on the wall and stuff, you know.
Oh, really?
This, now this, this also included the redesign of the Shakoma Beach.
No.
No.
It did not include anything for Shakoma Beach.
No.
Well.
So it not even the crossing?
The crossing.
It does include the crossing.
Yeah.
Okay. Like I thought Pathways presented it as including the crossing.
Yeah. I'll double check, but it includes a crossing there and one.
Further down.
By the Shaker Museum.
Yeah.
There's no penalty for us getting it and finding out. We just, our taxpayers won't support it.
You can always submit it and then apply.
I guess I'd rather submit it and go to the taxpayers.
Right.
And maybe.
Taxpayers have to say.
Timing's not great.
No, no, it's not, no.
But but with these grants, you have to put your fist forward or not at all.
Right.
And there isn't.
Looking at it that way, that that's that's a lot of money to get.
It's a lot of money to get.
It's something that'll be very enjoyable and useful.
It will.
Yeah, I was just going to go down and then I also did draft a letter of support. For Eric to sign up the select board would like to go in for this and it's a forward by brush.
All right. Based on our conversation, I'm going to make a motion to.
All right, submit the grant.
Have the town manager submit the F Federal Highway, what is it, Federal Highway?
National Scenic Byway Grant. In an amount.
In amount of one million, nine hundred twelve thousand dollars. It's not.
Unbelievable, nine hundred and twelve thousand, nine hundred dollars.
Nine hundred dollars, um.
Sounds like that make me micromanage.
And, um, to further. Authorize our chair to sign a letter of support. I guess that's my full motion is that?
I'll second that. Okay, so discussion of motion.
Yep.
All in favor of submitting the grant, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That we will submit the grant.
Any timeline as to when they would respond, do they?
They do, but they're never usually right. Last one was about eight months late.
Yeah. So we might not even hear anything until early two thousand twenty-six, for example.
Yeah, it's something we should be thinking about as we move forward. I mean, it is a lot of money and where we come up with it, that's going to take some some work and thought.
And the timeline is.
On the, on the flip side of that. To spend three hundred and eighty-two thousand to get one point five million for a project that has been in. for a project that has been in the corridor management plan, it's been part of the master plan, it's part of our strategic plan. I get a lot of calls asking when that trail is going to be built.
Yeah.
People would like to see it. So I think it's a really good project for the town. As you guys said, the the timing's a little unfortunate, but it's also not every year that money like this becomes available.
All right. That concludes the business of the evening. There are no administrative items tonight, and so we are too.
Aren't there things we have to sign for this?
I'm sure there are. But that brings us to public comment. Is there any public comment this evening? Please.
One more thing, special congratulations. I just want to say thank you. You certainly give us a public plenty of opportunity to influence. And and I think from the resistance you got, you can certainly see how much I believe you watch. I think you're quite good at it.
Thank you, Shirley.
I'm taking care of how that.
I don't know.
Thank you for staying the whole time, friend. Thank you.
And I want to apologize to this gentleman here for snarling at him. Sorry about that.
Okay.
I got overloaded with septic this year.
Okay. There's no other public comment. Is there any other business to come before?
I'm pressing this one out to the press.
All right, hearing no other business. I would entertain a mention to adjourn.
I move the adjourn.
Oh, great, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, everybody. Appreciate you coming out this evening.